Hello, welcome. We are back in public, thank you. Oh, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. We're back in public session. Bear with me one second while I get my pin on. All right. There we go. And I'd like to begin with a moment of silence in memory of Brenna Case. All right, thank you, everybody. Very sad week for us, North End of our public schools. Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have anyone here for public comment? Okay. There's no recognition this evening. So the first item are the consent items, beginning with the minutes. There's three sets of minutes, October 19th, November 2nd, and then minutes from November 8th through the 28th of 2022.
I would love that we approve the minutes from October 19th, '23, November 2nd, '23, November 8th to the 28th, '22 as presented in the packet.
Give everybody a minute to review them if they haven't had a chance before.
So you moved that on second, or was it already seconded?
They've not had a second yet.
Okay, I second. Sorry.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Do people need more time to review? Anybody? No? All right, well then I'd like to vote.
Are we having discussion?
Oh, well, certainly we can have a discussion.
I know we had had discussion last meeting on the October 19th about adding the names of those who spoke during the recess. I don't know where we were going to stay on that issue.
So we can certainly... So let me review what it actually says now. Here we go. Yes, so Town Council, as you requested, actually, I was checking with Town Council, and she informed me that activity that took place after the recess was declared was not part of the official record. So that's why that's not, those names are not here. We can certainly talk about that.
Right. From what I understood was that it doesn't, didn't mean we couldn't add them to the minutes. I'm still suggesting that we add those names of the people who spoke. I'm not saying we need to add the content of what they spoke about, just merely the names that they had spoke.
So I guess we could...
I would agree.
Okay. Do we, we need to take a vote on that, I think, right?
We'd be amending them. So we'll vote on that, I think.
So why don't we separate? Can I suggest that maybe we start over and, yeah? Let's do them one at a time.
I would move to remove all of the minutes listed.
Yeah.
Andrew, I think you have to remove them.
I will remove my second.
All right. So let's start over. So would you like to make a motion to change, to amend them?
So I would move to amend the October 19th meeting minutes to add the names of those that spoke during the recess.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I second.
Any further, any discussion?
I think we are at recess. I'm not in favor of adding them.
Any other discussion?
I'm not sure how I feel about it. I'm kind of indifferent towards it. I mean, it's recorded.
Comments are there, yeah.
And it's all on North Endover Cam if we needed it. I don't really have a strong opinion either way.
I was gonna say, my personal feeling initially was that I did not want them there because I feel like they were out of order when I asked them to, you know, we had a policy of 15 to 25 minutes. I let it extend to the full 25, actually probably went longer than that, and I didn't feel real good about the fact that that couldn't seem to get order here. So I'm not in favor, but that's me. That's my opinion. So we should probably vote. No further discussion?
I think regardless of how we might feel about them, having spoken, not spoken, there were things said and we heard them, so I think it's important that we recognize that it happened.
It can be listed as during recess.
After a chair called the recess.
X, Y, and Z continued to speak. These were the speakers from this time to that time.
I would agree with that.
I think that's fair. Not, and content neutral.
Sure.
Happened.
Just listing the facts.
So is someone making an amendment to?
Yep. Alyssa?
No, I'm saying, okay.
All right, so the motion now would be to, oh, the motion right now is just to list the names of the people that spoke during the recess.
That was the original motion.
Okay, and, and, and can it be noted that they spoke during the, it'll be noted that they spoke during the recess, right?
Correct. I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Conick?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And I'm going to abstain. So passes three to one. I guess I galloped that, right?
No galloping.
No galloping.
Simmer down.
Okay, no galloping.
So now do we need to move to accept as amended? So I move to accept the October 19th, 2023 meeting minutes as amended.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Ms. Conick?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, now we need the others.
I would move that we approve the minutes for November 2nd, 2023, and November 8th to the 28th, 2022 as presented in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion on those?
I would again ask that these be separated only to the fact that I intend to abstain from the November 8th to the 28th as I wasn't present for any of that content, so I wouldn't...
You want me to pull back my... I'm just gonna, okay, I will take back my motion.
I'll take back mine.
All right. Okay, so let's start over.
We'll regain the time on the superintendent's floor. We're still ahead.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for November 2nd.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Great. Any discussion on November 2nd? No, I'm sorry, November 2nd, 2023. Okay, hearing none, we will vote. Mr. Hicks? Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski? Mr. Brown votes yes. Okay, November 2nd's good. And now, November 8th through 28th. Need a motion.
I'll try a third time. I will move that we approve the minutes from November 8th to the 28th, 2022 as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion on those minutes?
I think it should just be said that these are to fulfill the obligations required by the Attorney General for open meeting law violation.
All right, any further discussion? Okay. If not, we will vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
I abstain.
You're gonna abstain?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess I probably should abstain as well because I was not here either, so... But that passes three zero. All right, good. Now, the fun part of the evening, the student representative report, and we have all three people here tonight, Ben, Cece, and Harper.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben. I'm a senior at the high school. A week ago on Thursday, a member of the senior class was killed in a car crash, Brenna Case. We held a vigil in the high school parking lot on Saturday at 6:00 PM. Yes. Hello, my name is Ben. I'm a senior at the high school. A week ago on Thursday, a member of the senior class, Brenna Case, was killed in a car crash. We held a vigil in the parking lot on Saturday at 6:00 PM. About 300 students, I'd say, attended, along with her friends and family from outside of the school system. Starting on Monday, or starting on Saturday, actually, the guidance department held counseling office, counseling office hours and has continued throughout the week. It's been a sad week at the high school, I'd say, and especially difficult for all of her friends in the, in the school system. So, yeah.
Out of respect for Brenna and her family, that's all we're gonna say today.
Okay. All right, thank you. And as usual, you're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you have other things you'd prefer to do. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report, please.
All right. First up in the superintendent's report, just wanted to talk about Veterans Day. A lot of members of the community approached me and said, you know, it really meant a lot to them that we are observing Veterans Day. When it falls on a Saturday, some districts do not take the day to observe it, and so many folks had mentioned that. We had celebrations across several of our schools, and here we have a few slides from the Private Albert E. Thompson. This year's honoree veteran from the community was former fire chief Bill Dolan. Bill enlisted in the Army before he got drafted, was going to be drafted, and he re-upped for two tours, combat tours in Vietnam, and I had no idea that he was a Vietnam veteran who had served three tours. I had known him a long time, and I just learned this recently when we had an event at the high school at the Vietnam Memorial. So it was a terrific event. The kids were terrific. We did invite the two students who presented at the SLIC Pro about patriotism and wanted to have more of it. This was an event that was certainly unbelievable. We also recognized Kathy O'Neal, Nurse O'Neal's been coordinating that event forever. In total shock to her, she doesn't like attention. We had to call her in. She came halfway and then went back and then halfway, and then we finally got her in. But we also had celebrations at the Atkinson School, as you can see, and they had veterans of the family in, out at the Sergeant School, was this past Monday. All right, the Franklin School had, had an event. And as always, our students play a huge role in the Veterans Day Parade, typically as a speaker, but you had the band as well. And I think we're gonna get the band here. There are, there's the band. So they, they did an awesome job, and it was just really nice to let the veterans in our community know that we appreciate their service and also talk about with our students the essence raised for service and those values. So thank you to the veterans, and that's it in the superintendent's report for the veterans. All right, and now, before I turn it over for the school improvement plans, we have our principals here tonight, and I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lathrop.
Thank you. So tonight, we're gonna share with you the school improvement plans from all of our schools. I'm gonna invite the principals to come on up. I think Tiffany's gonna start for us. You wanna go to the next slide? So just to give you a little bit of a background and how we got to our school improvement plans this year, we started by reviewing our strategic plan, that's some work that we did at our summer retreat this year. We, all of the leadership team reviewed the superintendent's goals as well as the school committee goals. As a leadership team, we talked about the school improvement plan's purpose and an overview of what that plan might be. All of our directors also collaborated with us so to make sure that we're thinking about our curriculum pieces and helping to support the plan. All of our principals have met with their school councils, or in the process of meeting with their school councils to gather input and to present the plan. And then this year, we decided to go with one common template, so you'll see that all of the plans follow the same template throughout, starting from the Broad Street all the way up to the high school. And what the plans outline for you is there the goal description, why, what's the reason for this goal, so they'll give you sort of the current status, some improvement benchmarks that they're looking for, what are the strategies that they're going to do, the activities and the timeline, and then who might be responsible for doing that, and then their outcomes for those goals. So this year, we're gonna, what we're going to do is each principal, a principal team is gonna present the plan to you. You have actual copies of their, their school improvement plan. This is gonna try to bring it to life for you a little bit, so they're not gonna go through every single part of that and hopefully bring it to life. And then when we're finished, certainly some questions, but we thought we'd like to get through the whole presentation before questions. But if you feel like there's something that you need to know as they're talking, just for some clarity, feel free to pop in. All right, we're gonna start with Dr. Goddard.
Thank you, Pam. Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing? So we're gonna start first with the AVECC, our youngest students. You'll see that some of the metrics for some of the outcomes for us are the same for similar goals because we are focusing on some of the same data points regardless of the goal. So our first goal is around high-quality instruction specifically for ELA. The goal states that all teachers will continue to implement teaching high-quality instruction with increased integrity over the course of the 23-24 school year. So what that looks like for us, we're going to continue with Foundations Curriculum for Phonics across both preschool and K. We started it in preschool about three years ago. We're going to be using Hegarty phonemic awareness from K, for K and preschool. Again, that started it across the building about three years ago, and we've seen some really strong growth around phonics and phonemic awareness since implementing that. What's new for us is the implementation of Witten Wisdom reading curriculum. This came from looking at some of our data and seeing that some of our subpopulations were not doing as well as other groups of students. So 100% of our kindergarten classrooms are implementing Witten Wisdom this year. We have a few different examples up in the slideshow. One is an example of students reading G-O-Ds, which are our phonics readers that go with Witten Wisdom in Foundations. And then on the right side, you can see some students working on what we call our FQT, or it's one of our benchmarks mid module, our mid unit, that helps us to see that students are making progress toward the end-of-module task. So some of the benchmarks we're going, not yet, some of the benchmarks we're going to be using for this is making sure that I'm visiting ELA classrooms at least once per term. Kindergarten team teachers are gonna be meeting at least four times a year to unpack the upcoming modules, and we're gonna be meeting at least monthly to look at student data and talk about how the students are doing. Our outcomes for this goal are showing that 80% of our students will meet grade level expectations for the end-of-module task. 80% of our kindergarten students in all subgroups are going to be meeting their growth for phoneme segmenting and correct letter sounds, and 80% of our kindergarten students will meet their projected growth in reading MAP data. And then 100% of our students will show growth on their IEP goals with documented data. This goal comes specifically from us being a heavily, heavy special ed population. We have 23.6% of our students are on IEPs currently between preschool and K, so really looking at that data for their IEP growth. Next slide. Thanks, Jim. Goal number two is around our student-centered math instruction. All teachers will choose a math focus for the year in order to enhance the student-centered instruction in their math classrooms. This, again, comes from looking at some of the areas of growth for us as a building with some of our subpopulations not doing quite as well as some of the others in the MAP math data. So all kindergarten teachers have chosen a math focus. The majority of our teachers this year chose productive struggle. So that's gonna involve coaching cycles with myself and our math coach, Mr. Cabrera, going into classrooms, finding a targeted instructional area, and then supporting the teachers to look for growth within that targeted area. So what that focus is on here in some of the pictures, you can see some students directing their own learning. So on the left side, students are working on shapes and just determining whether they're rolling or sliding. And then you can see some examples of math centers where some students are working independently with manipulatives, while others are more teacher-supported depending on what the students need. Our benchmarks, our data outcomes rather, for this involves 80% of students meeting their growth for MAP math data, and then again, 100% of our students showing growth on their IEPs with documented data. Thank you. And goal three is around equity. All teachers will use data to ensure that all students are provided equal access to excellent instruction that encourages them to improve their capacity to think critically, communicate effectively, understand and manage emotions, and engage in academic risks. Again, this comes from looking at some of our subpopulations not doing quite as well as other groups and wanting to make sure that that equity is happening across the building. I am participating in a teaching and learning equity learning arc where I will learn how to, learn about the connection between high-quality instruction and equity for our students. Teachers will also be participating in some PDs around this, and 100% of our classrooms are going to be implementing our new curriculum as we, as I discussed. You can see up here on the board on the bottom left is an example of one of the, one of our DIBBLES progress monitoring tools. So we have, three times a year, we do DIBBLES benchmark testing, but in between those data cycles, we do progress monitoring to ensure that students are making progress towards those goals, and so that's a sample of the, some of the progress monitoring that we use to then determine what support students need. You can see a student in the middle working on ST Math, which is a very student-directed math program that helps students wherever, learn where they're at. And then on the other picture, you can see an example, this is called a tableau from Witten Wisdom, with students acting out apart from the story Chica Chica Boom Boom. And our outcomes for this equity goal include 80% of kindergarten students meeting the grade level benchmark for DIBBLES, phoneme seg, and correct letter sounds, and 80% of kindergarten students meeting their projected growth in both reading and math MAP, and again, 100% of our students showing growth on their IEP goals with documented data. And that's it for us, so thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna have our elementary, thank you, Dr. Goddard, we're gonna have our elementary team present next, and so what elementary has done is they're work together to have three common goals across all the elementary schools, and then each school has also developed one goal, a goal that's specific to their school. And so Ms. Alafelin, Mr. Cushing, Mrs. Leahy, Mr. Clark are here tonight, and Mr. Raymond is unfortunately out sick, so Mr. Clark is gonna do double duty for both Thompson and Franklin tonight.
My kids go to Thompson, so I figured, close enough to it. Yes, like Ms. Lathrop said, we have common goals across the five elementary schools, and we worked with them, we worked together in a unified way. We actually worked with Dr. Goddard in the initial phases too, so you'll see a lot of similarities in the goals, which are great, and then we eventually came to a point where we said, okay, now what we're talking about first through fifth grade, and we started using MCAS data, and the pre-K and K went their way, and she did an incredible job, so now.
Thompson up here goes, sweating a little bit more than I.
All right, so we're starting off, our first goal revolves around the HQIM, that high-quality instructional materials as well, and the goal specifically calls out that we're gonna continue to implement teaching Witten Wisdom with increased integrity over the course of the 23-24 school year. Some of the great things that we have seen already is that in year two, you know, when we talk about a rollout, year two is usually the harder year because year one, you kind of limp your way through, but year two, our teachers are already talking about how much the students are coming in and how much more successful they're already seeing their students just from having that one year behind them. So that has been incredible. We see some of the things up there when we talk about that HQIM, like Dr. Goddard mentioned Foundations, we've been doing Foundations for a long time. We can see a nice Foundations, Foundations lesson over there. There's a Socratic seminar happening in the middle. We have students working together. I can, in above the Witten Wisdom logo, you can see one student using two different complex texts to compare and contrast. They're working in such a unique way that two years ago, maybe we wouldn't have thought they were capable of doing, and now they're just blowing us out of the water. Excuse me. So we began by just figuring out, how do we get these students in the seats? Now that we have them in the seats, we're putting these materials in the hands of our teachers, and simply by putting them in the hands of our teachers, we're already making an impact. You know, we talk about where the school came from, and it's about that gap of our MCAS, where our white subgroup is scoring versus our Hispanic and Latino, and how are we closing that opportunity gap? And the outcome that we're hoping for by the end of the year is having that gap, as Dr. Foster used to say many, many years ago, have the gap. And the way that we're doing that is by not only just putting them in the hands, we have so many teacher leaders that have been built in through this process specifically around Witten Wisdom, but through all disciplines as well. We sat down the other day and we did the math, and we have 37 of our 85 classroom teachers as some type of teacher leader for Witten Wisdom, which is 44% of our classroom teachers have taken this extra step to take a leadership role in it to help support their peers, which is unbelievable when you talk about buy-in, and that is significantly impacting our ability to progress as quickly as we think that we are. Kristin Ando, the coaches, our teacher leaders, we're all working together to help increase this, you know, integrity that we're using the Witten Wisdom with, the confidence of our teachers, the confidence of our students, and we believe that through all of this and this learning arc that we've been now in, we're in our third year now, third year of the, the learning arc through the Lynch Leadership Academy through B.C. with Kristin Pizmenti, and you'll probably hear about that a couple more times tonight too, but through that, we're able to bridge that gap of equity in high-quality instructional materials and talk about how that brings our teachers to the next level and bring our students to meet those needs and to, and to have the gap. That was nice. All right, so our second one is also around student-centered math instructions, and again, in our plans, you could see that difference, that gap between the meeting exceeding expectations for our white subgroup versus our Hispanic and Latino, and again, the outcome that we're hoping for is to again have that gap. You know, it's about making those strides, it's about making those jumps, and we wanna be realistic in our expectations, but we wanna really push ourselves, and we think having the gap is the way that we can, we can do this together. You know, Ben is working on this professional development, Mr. Cabrera is working on this professional development plan, and it's around, Dr. Goddard referenced it, to the four mathematical strategies that we're talking about, and it's student discourse, multiple components of math instruction, alignment, and the productive struggle that Dr. Goddard said most of her, most of her teachers signed up for, and I think that is, in the elementary, I've found that to be the case as well. That seems to be the one that they're, they're looking to work the most with, which is going to be a good one to focus on as we're moving forward, because when we get our students and when we get to that point where they're working and they're struggling, how do we help them through that? And we do things like math, ST Math puzzles, puzzle talks. You can see a lot of hands-on activities up there, math games, student discourse, measuring with the liquids, I hope they don't overflow that one up there, and then just the different things like measuring elastics down the Thompson hallway, all of these things where the students are working together, able to speak to each other, talk about math, problem solve together. These are the ways that the teachers are now guiding their students to have ownership over their own learning. In addition to the Witten Wisdom leaders that we talked about a minute ago, we have math leaders as well, and some of the math leaders overlap. Every school has at least one, a few of the schools have two, and some of them overlap with they're also Witten Wisdom leaders, but some of them are not. That number brings up now, we're closer to 50, it's like 48.9% of our teachers are teacher leaders for a curricular area, which is impactful in a way that our morning collaboration, so every day, I'm not sure if you're aware, every day before, starting before school at that 8:10 and into about 9 o'clock, a grade level at the elementary level has a morning collaboration. So for example, today was fourth grade maybe at one of the schools. So they get together, and this is what they're talking about, they're bringing pieces of student work, our Witten Wisdom leaders are reviewing FQTs, they're going through it, they're dissecting it, where are our students falling and how do we bring them to that next level? And as we're gaining our confidence in all of these things and we're developing professionally through our learning arc, it's building capacity within us to help build capacity within our teachers, to help build capacity within our students, so we see really that trickle-down effect that we're excited about. And then finally, our, our third common goal is equity for all students, and directly called out, school community will continue to internalize equity concepts according to the district mindset of equity for all students. And you can see down in the right-hand corner of the slide, attendance matters, and we've really put a focus on that specifically right after COVID, but we've found as time has progressed, it's still been an area of concern. So it's something that our school counselors, our parent liaisons, everyone has really put a concerted effort towards. First, we have to get... First, we have to get the seats filled. Once we have the kids in the chairs, now we have these high-quality instructional materials that we've been talking about now for a few minutes, and we're making progress. The other piece of this is our responsive classroom, and just bringing that philosophy into all of our classrooms. On the bottom left of the slide, you see a morning meeting with some of the students from the RISE program at Franklin School included in that morning meeting. I see on the top right-hand, no, in the mid, next to the apple, is peer leaders. So we have peer leaders who come down from the high school, high school, which is an incredible program, because it gives the students something to strive for, wow, I can do this someday, I can come back and, and give back to my elementary school. Up in the top, next to the responsive classroom, that's a sergeant classroom where the fifth graders actually go down, and they sometimes facilitate the morning meeting for the younger students. So all of these opportunities for our students to take these leads, to take ownership over their own learning, and, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we also have leaders for responsive classroom as well. So we have such a dynamic group of educators within our buildings, leading the charge in all of these things, looking at data, figuring out, okay, what subgroup do we need to focus on now? What specific domains, what specific concepts within that domain do we need to focus on to help our students progress so we can, again, hit these outcomes of having the gap? It's all about the equity, and we have done that, like I said a minute ago, for three years through the Lynch Leadership Academy, and that has been the piece, I think, that we talk about in our meetings most frequently, about having the most impact on us, and then we're able to bring that back.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, thanks. So we also have one unique goal to each of our elementary schools, we wanted to make sure we had something school-specific, so I'm gonna take a sip of water and kick it over to Principal Lola Loughlin over there.
All right. Nice and loud. I won't start singing, I promise. All right, so for, sorry, our goal for Atkinson is to increase culturally responsive family engagement, that's connected to our academic goal over the course of the 23-24 school year. And we've been working extremely hard at Atkinson, I'm so proud of our staff and our students, but it's disheartening, I'm not gonna lie, to look at some of our data, even though we're working so hard. And like I just mentioned, in addition to those common goals, we're working to increase the family engagement piece. We know that they're an essential part of our community, and that their involvement helps to increase student achievement, and we want our families to see themselves represented in the school culture. So the increased family and community engagement in schools, we know is strongly associated with faster rates of literacy acquisition among our children, and we're planning to do this through supporting and encouraging parent inclusion in the NAPS English class, which you can see down, that's the flyer, so we've been sending that out in multiple languages to have some of our parents attend that, to support our E, EL teacher with the English Learner Parent Advisory Council, also a flyer up there, and that's been sent out multiple times to our families. Continuing to use the parent liaisons, I cannot stress enough how often we use them, it's definitely daily, but multiple times a day, and they're a great connection between our staff, our students, and our families. We're continuing to provide multiple translations for whole school and classroom communications, so all of our communications, like I said, go out in multiple languages. Planning academic family celebrations through the PTO community events, partnerships at Woodridge, this is something that has happened in the past, and we plan to try to have that connection more with after-school hours. Multicultural night, which is what these pictures are representing, we did it a few years back, right before COVID hit, and we had a great representation of our families there, we had over 200 people attend, so we're gonna plan to bring that back in the spring, but it was nice, because like I just mentioned, our families were able to see themselves represented through their cultures. And that's basically what we're working to do, because we know our family involvement will help to improve this data that, like I said, we're definitely concerned about.
Hi, Joe Clark, Franklin School. So on my plan, you probably saw that when we were looking at the meeting targets, like the criterion reference targets, my high-need subgroups actually met more, a higher percentage of targets than my white subgroup, which is amazing. When you look at the scaled score, my white students are still scoring on the achievement level at a higher rate, but the fact that we had that jump where they met so many more targets is showing that the needle's going in the right direction, and we have to kind of capitalize on that. I don't know if you heard at all yet about this three-year Lynch Leadership Academy learning arc that we've done, but, um, so it has morphed over time, where first we met, then we started bringing in our academic FCIs, and now it's at a point where Kristin Pizmenti, our coach, is doing one-on-ones. So what I've taken her from is I, you know, I, we have a motto every year, or a, you know, mantra every year, and this year it's believe, I don't know if we have any Ted Lasso fans out here today, but it is, it's kind of everything for us right now, everything's believe. We have lanyards and pins and coasters and things like that, but it's about building this belief in ourselves, and this is our school motto, so this is about the kids too, and we talk about believe, every day we're talking about believe in yourselves, believe in each other, believe in our school. And that's what I have taken as my year-long arc for my school, so I'm trying to now take what we've learned through this Lynch Leadership Academy and bring it down to my school level. We started the year off, what do we believe in, talking about what does excellent instruction look, sound, and feel like? We created a jam board that you can see over on the bottom right-hand corner there, where people put all their ideas up, and we're starting to organize them and think about buckets, and how can we make this, this common understanding? And when we come back in January, we're gonna revisit this really meticulously again to try to define that. The hope is that we come to a common understanding of, this is what excellent instruction looks like at Franklin School. Some examples of the great things that are happening, we have puzzle talks and ST math, students working through problems together, we can see small strategy groups up in the right-hand corner. As we went from we believe in each other, we started talking about we believe our students can do hard things. We talked, we've talked a lot about accommodating versus modifying, we've talked a lot about that productive struggle, and how do we continue to push our students, looking through that decap, and how do we take those incredible strategies and just good teaching practices and make sure that we're doing them on a daily basis to help our students? You know, I spoke about the teacher leaders earlier in the group, and we meet regularly, I meet with, you know, the Witten Wisdom ones or the responsive classrooms, and talk about their specific roles, and how do we, how do we, you know, capitalize on that, but also how does it tie into this greater, you know, greater concept of believe and believing in ourselves, so that we are able to push each other, work together, find the positives in what everybody else is doing, because there are so many great things happening. Our high-need subgroups met 62% of their targets for MCAS, which is incredible. So everybody's doing something great. Now we have to take that collective focus, bring it together so that we're all learning from each other and moving forward, and when we have that opportunity through this year-long arc, we're going to move forward, we're gonna continue, and my hope is that by the end of the year, you can see that our scaled scores for MCAS for meeting and exceeding expectations, oh, no, excuse me, our scaled score for MCAS for our high-needs groups are dancing right around, the average is dancing right around 500, which is considered meeting expectations, and that's my goal, is to have that scaled score, the average scaled score for the high-need subgroups, for all of them, to hit that 500 mark, so that we get the meeting, meeting expectations for all students, so we're really doing the best that we can for each of them. You know, it all comes back to believe for us this year, we believe in ourselves, we believe in each other, we believe in the school, I believe in believe, so, and I, I believe in what that can do for our school, and I think we're gonna see some great results from this learning arc that the teachers are excited about.
Principal of Kittredge Elementary School. We have, are looking for our fourth goal, we're looking at inclusive family engagement. And I have to tell you, this starts with a story that absolutely broke my heart when I was contacted by a parent during the summer. And this is someone that I've known for a lot of years, I felt very close to her, she had, had two children that had already gone through Kittredge and had, had gone all the way through high school, and she was talking to me about, you know, she first wanted to thank me for the, for helping and, and putting together a recommendation for her daughter to go to Shore Country Day. And she talked about the Rigorat Kittredge, the academics at Kittredge, and, you know, and, you know, my thing was, is I really wanted to know then, why at this point in time, because I knew she was gonna move her, she wanted to move her child, you know, to the school, you know, for middle school, and then, but now she was moving her child instead in fourth grade. And so, you know, we talked about, you know, all the academics at Kittredge and how well her daughter was doing. And she just said to me, she was very honest, and she said, I have to tell you, it does not feel like Kittredge is as welcoming as it was at one point in time. She really felt that there were barriers that were put up to parents, you know, she really felt that she didn't have an active role in her daughter's schooling. And so, of course, I have to say that I have always prided myself, you know, on being very open and inclusive of parents, and having parents and families, you know, be part of the school, because I believe that that is really, you know, a major success that we've had over the years. And so, so I have to say, I, you know, that phone call ended, and then I was a bit crushed, there's no question about it, and however, then I decided, okay, I, I've gotta just survey, you know, some of my other parents. And I called, first started with, you know, some of the parents that I'm very close with, and I would consider them friends too, and kind of point-blank asked them about, you know, what was it? You know, is this, is it true? And so they basically told me that since the pandemic, Kittredge is not as open to parents as it once was. So at that point in time, we met virtually with our school council during the summer to talk about our next steps, and, you know, because families need to feel welcome at Kittredge, there's no question. And so, you know, I really truly feel that, you know, having a partnership between parents and the school leads to a great success, you know, with our students. And it isn't just the academics and the achievement, it's really all those other things that kids will remember about when they were at Kittredge Elementary School. It's about the parents coming back and talking about what their experience was at Kittredge School. So we put together some action steps. First of all, in the classroom, we're providing more opportunities for parents to volunteer in the classroom, we've reinstituted our Royal and Mystery Reader Program, and that's where parents and families, you know, grandparents, aunts, uncles, whatever, can come in to, you know, read to their child's classroom. We've also created something, you know, with, alongside with the Kittredge PTO, what we call a Kittredge Crew, and it drives me a little bit crazy, because they really wanted to spell crew with K, you know, and I'm just not sure we should do that, but, but anyways, but, so we reinstated, you know, room parents again, you know, through the Kittredge Crew. It also allowed us to, and we actively recruited people, you know, teachers recruited people for the Kittredge Crew, I recruited people, you know, PTO members, you know, recruited people. And so this has really allowed us to have an active parent volunteer list, you know, which has been very helpful. We're also planning monthly grade-specific coffee socials, where parents can mingle and converse with staff members. We are also reinstating, reinstituting our POC program, which was Parents on the Playground. It was something that I had developed years ago with a parent by the name of Liz McDevitt, any relationship?
None.
Yeah, okay, and I have to tell you, so it was funny, because when we were putting the flyer together, you know, way back when, you know, I said to her, hey, don't forget, tell the parents that they can come in and they can actually eat lunch with their kids. And she, and I have this in a quote, it says, I thought you wanted to attract people to the school. So, so anyways, but, but we, we have instituted a community leader breakfast again, that will happen at the end of the year, and that involves parents, you know, going to interview community leaders with, so some of you might be contacted, you know, to, to actually interview, you know, some of our community leaders, then we have a nice community breakfast, parents are all involved with that, you know, we also for our Heritage Project, which is centered on immigration, you know, we've had family members to come in to talk about their plight as an immigrant to this country, you know, grandparents have come in, you know, again, aunts, uncles, you know, but it kind of makes it a little bit more real. We also for our fifth-grade expert project, and this is something we lightly started last year, but we'll invite parents to come in to discuss their job and what their expertise is. The school itself, you know, we are promoting an active, inclusive PTO. We have found that meeting virtually in the evening includes all family members, I mean, there were a lot of kids that are around with us too, and, but teachers and staff can make those meetings, you know, so we feel like that's a really good connection. We're inviting parents to all of our RISE rallies, we'll squeeze them in the gym somehow, you know, I just think, again, we're just kind of reaching out, you know, letting people know that we definitely are welcoming them. We are also inviting parents to, we haven't gotten a lot of takers with this yet, but to help us with, you know, we have a program, a leadership program with like our fourth and fifth graders, and they're called the raisins. We have a program for our grade two and three kids, those are the raisinettes, and our grade one are the grapes, because before you become a raisin, you have to be a grape, all right? So, so anyway, so we will, I'm sure that, I, I've already talked to a couple of parents that they're very enthusiastic now, but anyways, and then in the spring, we're gonna have a, just a family dance, you know, not a fundraiser or anything, just come to the school, we're gonna have the spring dance, we're gonna have a bingo night that night, and, you know, we have, one of the teachers said she'd be a DJ, but I'm thinking maybe we need to get DJ Brown back again to the school, all right? So, and then we have some community events that we have, that we're looking at, that we've done, we've already had our book fair, which included an ice cream social. I, I'm gonna tell you, I think that we had kids that, we don't have that many kids at Kittredge, you know, we know that, there were a lot of kids that came in from, from all around. We had face painting, craft activities, Clifford, the red, big red dog was there, most of our kids think that's really Pluto, not Clifford, so Clifford, the big red dog was there, Spirit, the Kittredge kangaroo was there, and then we have another character, the razor-saurus, you know, looks like a T-Rex, but, you know. So anyways, we're also going to do Kittredge Dines Out, where everybody comes to the school, and it's basically like everyone's pasta night, I think. We have, last year we started something a little bit different than the academic night, we had a family picnic night, we had an art show, we had a lot of activities for the kids to do, and we also had, instead of teachers being just in their classroom, teachers mingled amongst the, the crowd. And we also, we also, you know, that night, the kids were the ones that toured their families around the school, so it was kind of neat, you know. We also, we're also gonna reinstitute our re- And we also, we also, you know, that night, the kids were the ones that toured their families around the school. So it's kind of neat, you know. We also, we're also gonna reinstitute our year-end volunteer breakfast honoring all those people who really helped us at Kittredge. So I think it's a lot to, you know, to enact, but it's nothing different than what we've done in the past.
From the Annie L. Sargent, Principal.
I'm gonna make up a little time for you.
Yes, I will. I will. I read a room well. I'm already thinking about what's a baby shark called. Is it a Mimo, Minnow or something? But Karen Leahy, delighted to be here. And this marks my ninth year at Sargent School. Seventh year as principal. And I'm seeing some new faces to me, some familiar ones. And I wanted to just offer those that are new to me and me to you. I was a high school person before this, a high school teacher. So I say that because this slide for Sergeant is based on learning. And learning right now specifically in third grade. But what I want to share with you, and it touches very briefly on what's been mentioned already, is the way that we have in the last few years, I think, since I was last, before you, thrilled about the coaches and about the ways that we're now using teachers as part of the team of curriculum instruction outside of their own classroom. So I say a thing at Sergeant all the time, the teachers can quote me, and that is that all of us are smarter than one of us. And I believe that in any kind of good education, it's not about, it is about what we say and what we're reading, but it's also very much about what we're modeling. And so, when Joe has talked and others about productive struggle is, we have it painted across the top of the second floor is, we can do hard things. And so, that's been an ongoing way that we've worked at Sergeant with it. And I mentioned about the high school stuff is because I continue to learn. And one of the things I just did this week, added to my repertoire of my resume, is that I attended the training for foundations, which I've been in a lot of classrooms and understand the foundations, but to be actually part of the training that Pam has provided. My, our first grade teachers were at it today, but third grade in particular. So my slide is based on third grade. And what's not up on the screen is that 29% of the students in third grade currently at Sergeant have some risk or a high risk for the decoding and some of the reading skills that are necessary in third grade. So at Sergeant, we currently have one reading interventionist. And so, they have been working with classroom teachers in first grade and second grade. And those students then move on to third grade. And what happens in third grade is that the teachers try with the small group instruction to be able to pick up where the students left second grade. But they're not getting the additional support of reading intervention. And they're not doing the foundation skills that they did in first and second grade. And so, this is what's being instituted now, is that the teachers were just trained across the district in third grade. And in third grade, the year is a soft rollout, if you will, where the teachers are being trained. And then next year, it would be that everybody would be up to speed and doing foundations regularly in the classroom. What I'm proposing and also about the Boston College coach that we are all working with. Two years, we've done it collectively as a team. This year, she comes through our school. And so, I tapped her. She's magnificent and a brilliant person with a wide swath of knowledge in in her coaching as well as being a principal. And I said, I feel like I have a really big bucket and I wanted to still it down to one specific thing. So it's the foundation. So I'm hoping in my conversations with my third grade teachers of getting them on board that they're willing, that they've been trained. And now we have students in front of us, 29% of 105 kids in third grade that need this support. But I want to support them in it. So myself, my assistant principal, who Aaron and I share, Ellen Peters. Ellen and I are going to push into classrooms. I'm trying to divide up more time amongst the 2.5 reading interventionists and seeing creative ways that I can get the support to support the teachers, which support the students by getting time to push into the classroom. So that's the the goal this year. And I know that you have a copy of this, so I won't read it to you. But, you know, we have 46% of the kids that are above benchmark, 25 that are at the core of it, and then those 29%. So the wit and wisdom is helpful, but it doesn't do a lot of the decoding that we want done. And some of that is just the foundation skills. So I want to really put the fun back in foundations and I'm learning with them and want to shoulder it with the teachers so that it's, it doesn't feel that they're just being put out, that they have to do it themselves this year. So that's, that's what we're hoping to happen at Sergeant. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thirty seconds or less.
Chris Raymond, Thompson School, social emotional learning. We got it. So forgive me, I'm just gonna read most of what he wrote. But so they were looking at the vocal data survey given to fourth and fifth grade students at the conclusion of MCAS. They were encouraged by the data that they saw, but still see rooms, you know, opportunities for improvement. So they're taking that data to determine where they want to focus their improvement strategies and strengthen the SEL efforts for their students. Some of the things you can see up there, responsive classroom morning meeting. The Maybe is a book written by Kobe Yamada. And it celebrates, it's a book that celebrates the differences within all of us. And what Thompson did was they gave every student a feather, and obviously they're multicolored feathers, but they gave every student a feather and they had them write positive traits about themselves on it. In the idea of, this is what's special and different about me. And then they created this beautiful bulletin board front and center in the hallway for everyone to see as they're walking back and forth throughout the halls. Thompson has also developed a Raze SEL team. And they do community meeting once a month where it's focused on usually one of those Raze values and how they can work through that. And their spirit group sends resources, slides, information to teachers ahead of those monthly meetings so that they can work with them, with their students in the morning meetings over the course of the month. So then it becomes like this culmination of what they've been talking about, which is great. He does want to acknowledge and recognize the spirit team members. It's a dedicated team that meets every other Wednesday before school, which includes Sean Morgan, PE/lead teacher, Stacy Foster, school counselor, Jess Thurston, teacher, Mary Egan, teacher, Deb Gilmartin, teacher, and responsive classroom FCI. And this last one is Kristen Clark, I think is her name. And it's also her birthday. Happy birthday, Kristen, wherever you are out there. So he's really happy to be able to work with each and every one of them every other Wednesday to kind of develop this and talk about what the social emotional needs are within their building. They do hope to incorporate three family-based SEL engagement activities within the parent community over the second half of the school year. And Principal Raymond calls out specifically that he's working with his school council in order to determine best steps on doing that and how to get as much parent engagement as he can for those to bring everybody in on this effort to help increase their social emotional learning and capacity at the Thompson School.
Thank you, elementary team. So our middle school and our high school principals, Mr. Jackson and Mr. Gonzalez are coming up now. And you'll, they'll have a couple, they've worked together, although they're two separate schools. You'll see that there are some similarities between their goals.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, George.
Hi, everybody. Excuse my voice. Woke up Monday morning and I knew I was getting sick. But I think I'm on the mend. So let's hope my voice holds because when I was with Pam this morning, it didn't do so well. All right. Thank you for all the cough drops, Karen. Let's see if I need them. So first off, goal number one, this is the NAMSS addition and renovation project goal. This goal is so big. It's not just about building the addition. It's building the addition, the renovation, and everything that goes with it that can improve the experience for students and staff at NAMSS. So of course, there's lots of deadlines to meet. There's lots of committees that I'm a part of, including the NAMSS School Building Committee with Mr. Hicks. We're, our hope is that this project will be done on time. And it'll allow us to create additional classes to reduce class size and to expand current programming and supports. We'll have dedicated spaces for specialized instruction. We're gonna get rid of 38-year-old carpets. We're going to create a new and improved recess area outside the cafeteria. We're going to reestablish science classrooms with lab spaces. We're gonna update the drainage system. We're gonna upgrade the HVAC system. We're gonna upgrade our pneumatic thermostats in our classrooms. So some rooms aren't below zero and others are 85 degrees. We're also going to upgrade the lighting in the auditorium. So a lot's going on. It requires a lot of calibration to get this done. But what I'm excited about most is, this is opportunity. This is opportunity to look at our current schedule, to see if it's the best schedule to meet the needs of our kids. This is an opportunity to look at our present staffing and see what we need more of and what we want to create as far as opportunities, resources, and supports for our kids. So meeting with different groups, including my own internal group at NAMSS. We're having a lot of conversations, a lot of subcommittees. And as the year goes on, we'll have more hopes for the future and more ideas of what we can do with this project. So we're really excited for that. The next goal is meeting the needs of all learners. We want to continue to improve the consistent and rigorous instruction with increased alignment to grade level standards that meets the needs of all learners. It's a simple sentence, but there's a lot packed into that goal. We want to make sure that we're teaching our students the grade level standards, regardless of where they're at, where they're coming in at, interests, levels of readiness. We have those frameworks and we need to make sure kids are learning the state-level frameworks for their grade level. And we want to give them an opportunity to experience rigor and find success. And it's going to look different for every child because we know that all children are different. I'm sure in your homes, you don't cook one meal that you put in at the table. Everybody in your family has different dietary needs, so you cook as many different meals as there are. No? Everybody's looking at me funny. You don't do that? All right. Well, we don't do that either because that would be insanity. What we do, though, is we have to find those grade level standards and we have to make sure that we're meeting kids where they're at and we're getting them to that level of proficiency. In looking at our data, it's it's really promising to see that, for example, our MCAS accountability percentile was 63 in 2019. We're up to 71% in 2023. We continue to show growth in most of our student subgroups, including all students. However, we do have groups that aren't experiencing the same success. So when it, when we look at this and we say all learners, that's what we mean. We want to make sure that the school as a whole can improve and increase, but are all students in that school also showing growth and improving their performance. And that's something we really want to focus in on. You've heard about the learning arc that we're all participating in as principals and as schools. The central office and the district curriculum team has been instrumental in working with all of the schools and all of the principals. And in turn, us working with our academic coordinators and building leadership capacity in our school. You've heard principals say tonight that their teachers are taking the lead on PD. That's when PD is really glorious. And that's what we have at NAMSS. It isn't George Gonzo standing in the front of all the staff, providing the PD. It's staff breaking into groups, being led by different colleagues in different areas. And we're gonna continue that. That's something we've started. It's showing wonderful results in regards to how people are receiving PD. And we want to continue that. And by looking at data, we're identifying our areas of need and then designing the PD, designing the observation cycle to support those areas. And we have essential questions that we asked our staff at the beginning of the year. And to be honest, I think these are the same essential questions that I will have for the school until I retire. They are, in which ways am I currently providing challenge, choice, and support for all my students? How do I get to know my students? And what information do I currently gather that helps me know who they are and what they need? What types of motivational engagement am I currently using for all students? Which social emotional skills am I teaching or modeling for students each day? How do I utilize data to inform my decisions? And how do I currently engage families? All of our PD, moving forward, fits within one of those boxes or multiple boxes. So that's a little bit about that. And our goal is to make sure we're meeting or exceeding MCAS growth targets. And we're also increasing our success and achievement on MAP assessments. So MCAS and MAP are two measures that we use to assess how we're doing. And then the final goal is the equity goal. This is a mouthful, I know, but there's a lot here. For the upcoming school year, the current school year, NAMSS will continue to internalize equity concepts according to the district mindset, equity for all students. And the focus on intellectualism is a counter narrative to negative and racist stereotypes about students as achievers. So I mentioned that staff are leading PD. We finished a contract with Facing History in Ourselves. And last year, we had a lot of PD, both at the high school and the middle school. Some of it combined, some of it separate, all of it virtual last year on Facing History in Ourselves. Asking the why, why we do this work, the what, what is this work? Well, this past Wednesday, which was actually yesterday, yesterday's PD. At the high school, there were facilitators. At the middle school, there were facilitators. We made small groups and we delved into the how. How do we do this work? That's when teachers' ears perk up. Oh, we're actually talking about how this applies tomorrow in the classroom? This is quality PD. And we embarked on that. We led staff through PD. It was very well received. And the facilitators have already asked, when do we have a briefing to talk about how it went? We know how it went. It went really well. And and then what we do next. So we're gonna schedule that next week. And again, our future PD all serves to answer those questions. But we do have equity gaps in the school. Our students on with IEPs, our Hispanic Latino students, our EL or former EL students, they're not showing as much in regards to achievement as our other populations of students. Yet in terms of growth, they are showing good growth. So we're on the right track. We're on the right track. But we definitely want to continue to do sometimes more, sometimes more efficient, sometimes more quality. So we're doing that. Staff are participating in SEL professional development throughout the year. We have class meetings at NAMSS on Wednesdays. We're obviously participating in the teaching and learning, equity learning arc as principals. And we're bringing that back to our school-based leadership curriculum teams. We're doing an improved job, come on, voice, hold on, of reminding all staff about religious holidays. But Pam has been wonderful in providing us not just reminders, but also information. So instead of asking all the principals, research the holidays and make sure all staff know about it. She's meeting us halfway and giving us materials. So when we talk to staff about the upcoming holiday, we're also giving staff information about the holiday, activities to do with kids around the holidays, so everyone can feel like they're a welcome member of the school community. Also, we're recognizing and celebrating different groups each month. So there are those months, Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. So we have morning announcements at NAMSS, which anybody in the world can see. Click on morning announcements on our website and you can watch morning announcements. And on Fridays, you can hear me tell some jokes. I think they're pretty good, just saying. Anyways, back to reality. So so for every, every theme, we provide different precepts, different quotes. We celebrate, recognize, honor. The bottom-left picture is students preparing decorations that they decorated the entire calf for Hispanic Latino-American Heritage Month. And we want to continue to find ways to celebrate, recognize, and give kids a voice and make sure that they feel valued. We'll continue PD. And as we, to close, I'll, I'll go back to where I opened, which is with the addition. That addition and the ability to hire additional staff when we open in '25, '26, that new wing, we're going to be exploring and identifying targeted interventions as part of the multi-tiered systems of support to address students' academic needs. We need more Tier Two at NAMSS. We're identifying that. And that's gonna be our opportunity. But we're not just going to do it willy-nilly. We want to be thoughtful. And we want to do it at the same time we look at how we use space, look at it at the same time as our schedule, look at it at the same time as our staffing, but all based on student needs. So lots to do, good work, fun work, valuable work, important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, George.
Aw, Chad, thanks.
Do my best. Chad Jackson, Principal, North End River High School. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Uh, thanks for having me here tonight. Uh, I just want to start off by um, you know, kind of mentioning our team first and foremost. Uh, you know, having Pam here uh since the summer uh and working with the principals, we, we truly are developing into a very good to great team. Um, we definitely lean on each other for uh support when it comes to these plans and working together. Uh, and remembering all the items there is to have to remember as we run through a school year. So uh, just to let everyone know, it's uh, it's great to kind of plow through as we kind of prepare for a new journey of uh school improvement plans uh today. Um, our goals at the high school, I'll try and be as brief as possible, knowing you have the material in front of you. Uh, we have three goals. Um, a lot of our PD time in general for our goals goes around improving instructional practice. Um, it's our teachers working in teams to improve instructional practice, to enhance student learning. Uh, so it's a kind of theme that kind of runs through, it's run through a lot of the plans you've heard tonight. Uh, it runs through mine as well. Uh, our first one's more quantitative. Uh, they're uh talking about North Endover High School meeting or exceeding our MCAS growth targets uh for next year's exam. Um, obviously with the data coming back from last year, um uh, a benchmark we have uh is to increase our criterion reference targets from the improvement targets from sixty-four percent to seventy-five percent. Uh, that would allow the high school to move from substantial progress onward targets to meeting or exceeding MCAS growth targets for that exam. So um, a lot of the work uh we have to do at the high school also involves our Latino uh subgroup and our EL subgroup. Um, as also be mentioned in our equity goal. Um, our curriculum coordinators have met with uh our department leaders to review that specific MCAS data. Uh, and uh they've actually also reviewed with us um, you know, all our courses that match up with our advanced coursework designation um that goes into our high school MCAS score, which is important uh as we kind of go into course recommendation season and making sure we're maximizing uh the opportunities for all our students for advanced coursework. Uh, so that's a focus for us this year as well. Um, this goal really focuses around our ELA, math and science departments. Um, and they've, they've dove in and have started to create their own specific plans within the department and focus areas uh to develop toward MCAS. We did a lot of work on that with the curriculum coordinators uh on our November full day, full PD day. Um, so they're now in that spot to, to really dive in. Uh, and again, as we kind of use our PD timed, um, we kind of use it to uh look at student work. Um, sometimes about opening practice, which I'll talk about in a second. Um, uh, but it's very valuable time whenever we have those early releases or full days. All right, uh, second goal is more whole school oriented. Uh, it's probably one of my favorite, favorite ones to talk about. Um, we're going to try to continue to develop a culture of continuous learning of our staff uh and have a growth mindset. Um, while setting expectations and providing that PD time for staff to reflect and make those necessary adjustments. Um, we do have a second year in a row uh focus on peer observation and learning walks. Um, each year, um, we have a school focus uh at our August leadership date at the high school. Uh, we selected the meet, uh, meeting the diverse needs of students. Um, and that's outlined in that second improvement benchmark bullet that you have in the actual goals. Um, all our departments, all our teachers have uh a goal and some action steps uh around, around that language. Um, what's cool about uh this goal um is opening practice. Um, you know, one of the things that we want to model to our kids is and to our teachers, it's okay to go in each other's space. It's okay to share practice. We want to be able to document those best practices, uh, be able to pick up tips in any sort of way, uh, whether it's uh George and I pair, pair up and I visit him and he visits me. Uh, and we get an opportunity to reflect on that and ask questions, whether it's a similar discipline or a different discipline. Um, and, and our peer observation is going to take place the week after Thanksgiving. Uh, for a week, we're going to have different teachers in different rooms um so that we can have those conversations uh around that first PD day in December. Um, then in February, uh, we have teachers sign up for learning walks uh where they get, they kind of train in some prep time uh to come and visit. And we'll line up two or three classes for each teacher that signs up to visit. Um, they'll go through and we have some scripting sheets for them. Uh, they come back and I facilitate the debrief at the end of it in the library. Um, and then we kind of document kind of what everyone's learned. And I'm able to keep a, a pretty good running doc and share that schoolwide uh and talk about that at a future day in February. So um, it's one of the most more exciting things we do together. And the teachers really enjoy an opportunity to uh visit uh classes with some people they have respect for or something, people, people that kids talk about, oh, I really want to go see Ms. Tracy's class. Some of the teachers are like, oh, I want to go see Ms. Tracy's class, uh, for example. So um, you know, it, it's a nice goal uh that really involves our whole school um and, and, and also improves our climate and culture. Right, uh, three, uh, our equity for all students, goal is the same as the middle schools. Uh, George and I collaborated on that language uh with the help of Kristen and Kara as well. Um, you know, um, I think this is digging a little deeper than our first goal. Um, this is uh us kind of looking into closing our, our opportunity gaps for our students, EL and Latino subgroups. Uh, providing more students with classes that are designated and at advanced coursework uh is a priority for us. Um, as George mentioned, we've continued our PD in Facing History in Ourselves, uh, thinking about the how and uh how we complete equity and justice work as a school. Um, you know, specifically, we reflected on how, how we on academic mindsets and pedagogical practices um had a chance to journal and reflect and all our teachers had a chance to take one thing to write down what we'd work on in the equity context. Uh, and I think that was an important takeaway from our Facing History in Ourselves yesterday uh on there. Um, I know for me, uh, one thing I'm looking to work on is kind of confronting, um, whether it's uh unconscious or conscious bias. Um, a lot of times you may go around and, and hear, you know, hear comments, terms, uh, staff, students. And one of the things we're trying to have an environment a little bit more comfortable where we can have those conversations uh and really improve on um, you know, what we model as professionals as well. So um, we also, you'll see in that goal, have a civics project that we're working on with our eleventh grades. There's two different civics projects that are um in process of being developed uh for the winter. And we're working on our habits of learning rubric. Um, just as a side note, um, that we've had for several years and trying to bring it more to life and look and see how we can improve that and how it looks in Power School as well. Um, that's our goals.
All right, we're only, we're only fourteen minutes over. We are doing all right here.
Um, so we're happy to entertain any questions you might have. We know that was a long presentation, uh, lots to digest. But if there are things that we can specifically answer for you tonight, we're happy to do that.
Who wants to start? Uh, well, I, I'll, I'll start if that's okay. Um, I'm curious, and, and I think I heard this mostly at the elementary level, but you mentioned teacher leaders and, and all the different disciplines. What, what are the criteria to be a teacher leader and, and how are they chosen?
So our criteria, I, no, I said it's not something that I was necessarily here for, but the criteria is developed with the um, the coordinators. So I know the work that we did with Witten Wisdom, Kristen Ando worked with the principals um and obviously the rain marks at the time to develop that criteria. Uh, we're also working with um a landscape and with a group. We have the High Quality Instructional Materials Grant, so we're working with a group called Rivet that helped us to create that job description, um, which was posted and advertised. And then um all of the applicants were interviewed um with Kristen along with the principals to make sure that they were a good match for their building.
Yeah, simply put, in the old days, it used to be who are the early adopters, right? Who are the folks that are doing this early on? You know, and this is, this was an opportunity and I, you know, Ms. Marks is not here. Maybe she's watching on television, I doubt it. Um, but um, an opportunity to formalize and really put things in place because the biggest mistake districts make is when they implement um something like Witten Wisdom. They don't have the scaffolding or supports or the leaders that are necessary for successful implementation.
So they, do they need any special training for that or?
So they, as Dr. Gilligan just said, they're usually people who have a um affinity towards that or they may have some background, perhaps, you know, if you're looking at reading, they may have a strong background in reading or they may be somebody who's already done professional development in our district. What we did once we hired them was that Kristen Ando and the coaches provided specific training for them this summer. They attended several uh training sessions and they continue to train, train, continue to um attend training sessions. So that it's sort of like teach, um, train the trainer, train the trainer model. And then they go and deliver the um PD within their building.
All right, thank you. Um, should I keep going or do you guys want to take turns or? Uh, because I have several more, but.
Might as well keep going.
It's okay.
Sure.
All right. Um, Joe, I think you mentioned something, I, I think it was an acronym I'd never heard before and I might not have the letters right, FQT?
Oh, yes. So in, excuse me. In Witten Wisdom, it's the, oh my God, focusing question task. Oh, nailed it, nailed it. It was like one of those things that dropped as soon as you asked. Um, focusing question task, it's almost aligned to like an end of module assessment. Um, so what the students are tasked to do is they have an essential question, a focusing question. What's that third one? I always forget the third one. But anyways, so the focusing question is about really kind of like the unit within the module. And at the end of that, or the arc is what they call it in Witten Wisdom, at the end of the arc, it kind of, it's a writing piece where they can show what they've learned about the topic and the craft of writing at the same time, where they're merging the reading and writing skills.
Okay, thank you. And then one, one more on the elementary level. Um, I saw several places responsive classroom. And I heard a lot about morning meeting. Um, so I think this stuff is kind of newer than what my children went through. Um, so if you could just elaborate just a little bit about what responsive classroom is all about. I didn't quite, I couldn't, I mean, there's a lot of information, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so it's really a social, wow. It's a social emotional curriculum and it's really a philosophy more than anything. So morning meeting is really the most well-known component of it, but there's so much more about that. Our responsive classroom FCIs have, similar to the Witten Wisdom, they've gone through trainings. They've been to actual trainings at responsive classroom with their trainers to train the trainers. There's common language throughout the building, logical consequences, interactive role modeling, all these different components to help students learn conflict resolution, learn how to work together and, and be a community of learners.
Okay, all right. Might, those are my three, three big ones.
I, I think I have one for each of the elementary teachers, sorry, or principals. Um, but I can, where am I starting? Um, Dr. Goddard, um, quick question about DIBELS because you showed us that great slide of tracking the progress monitoring that we're doing. Um, what system are we using to compile all that amazing, useful, important data?
DIBELS, sorry. DIBELS has a dashboard that we're able to use, so teachers are able to go on and look at it and see and compare.
Great, the DIBELS management system. So we have that subscription so we can do all the things and run all those reports and see all this stuff.
Correct.
Are we able to, with that management system, be able to see subgroup uh performance on, on those? And are we seeing any trends that we should take note of that are important for us to start looking at? Or that confirm or refute any of the other MCAS conclusions or MAP conclusions that we have?
Yeah, so we're seeing similar trends to some of our, some of our subpopulations um that are struggling. So particularly our Latinx students are struggling compared to our white students. So that is something that we're looking at and discussing as a school.
And um are all, are teachers getting access to those numbers?
Oh, yes. Yeah, and then in our collaboration uh meetings, which we have each week, we also, um, every two to three weeks, we're looking at the progress monitoring data to determine whether the interventions put in place are working and if not, what can we do to help support those students?
Fantastic.
That, um, that's also, we're, it was part of our MCAS presentation. So we are upgrading the DIBELS platform to M-Class. Um, that will be, yeah, so that will be coming in December. Um, and we'll have training on that, so that gives you on-demand, I mean, um, immediate scoring. Um, and so there's a lots that, and there would be a lot of um access for the teachers to be able to. It looks like you know what M-Class is.
So we will be able to have kids do the DIBELS in the computer and we don't have to have teachers administrate them one at a time.
Correct.
Saving time.
Yep.
Amazing.
It's still a one-to-one situation, so the teacher um is still doing it one-to-one, but it scores immediately onto the, um, we purchased some iPads that they'll be um using with them. They'll be training some, some people too. So we're going to roll that out for our next, hopefully, our next um DIBELS time.
Joe, I have to say, you're the first person to really be excited about M-Class.
I, I looked at the product myself and I was, I'm, I'm jealous. Um, I wish we could use that um in, in where I work. Um, thank you. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Clark. Um, quick question about students starting instruction in math. You said we're going to continue to implement teaching Eureka math. Um, how long have we been using Eureka math? Is it still the, I'll ask, I'll ask all the things and then you give the one answer.
Twenty seventeen, eighteen.
Is it still the right product for us to be using? Should we start thinking of something else and do you think we might move towards Eureka math squared?
Well, I just had a conversation with this, with Mr. Cabrera, who's starting a process that I think Ms. Lathrow would be much more equipped to answer than myself.
It's like Joe's reading our minds.
Yes, we, we, we touched upon that at the, at the MCAS presentation. We will be starting a review of our um math program that um Ben Cabrera is um starting to look at. Um, you know, what we're going to do is look at, are we teaching Eureka to fidelity? Well, how are we doing with our scores? Um, is it time to start looking at something else? We will follow the process that Desi sets out when looking at curriculum. And we will certainly be looking at ed reports and curates um to make sure that we're having a, a program or, um, you know, materials that are supported by Desi. But we are on the, um, we're on that track.
Thank you. Um, can I keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Miss Laublin.
Hi.
Um, quick on family engagement, um, thank you. I, I do get, I, I got all the emails last year in multiple languages. It's so great. Um, in terms of just mechanics, how are we having those translated? Like, what's the program we're using and is that the best way for us to translate? So, or should we be investing in a different product to do it better?
This is really exciting. I want to let Pam explain. I can't believe that we have the capacity to do this. This is like really cool.
So we purchase, we belong to the same collaborative and Marcy and I and Kristen were able to sit in on a, a demo of a photocopyer that Matt Saul recommends and that is the, um, Matt Saul is part of the ELML um community. And um, so we, uh, through some of our grant funding and through some other funding, we have purchased this photocopy machine that will be able to translate into hundreds of different languages. Um, it is amazing. So it takes about a three-minute time from when you uh put the document in um for it to come out into the language that you um want to be able to do that.
It's like a photocopy machine. I put a thing down and it comes out in another.
It comes, it's through the cloud. It is web-based. Um, and we, we have vetted it um lots of different, I feel really um confident in SEEM and the work that they've done. I met with other assist, other assistant superintendents. We've met with the company um to vet it. We have put, they put several IEPs, one of the things that really is coming from is put several IEPs through this process and had, uh, you know, lots of people look at it to make sure that there's not mistakes and that it's not translating the wrong way um in about, you know, like a ninety-eight percent accuracy. So hopefully soon that machine will be here in central office, so.
This is breaking news, Principal.
It is breaking news.
This makes me so excited.
We, you know, uh, we're going to keep it here and try to do a central, like people sending things here or maybe some of the ML, um, EL teachers coming here to be able to do that. But we're really excited. So uh Kristen Ando is working with Mike Grant right now.
Yeah, what's exciting about it is we have other parent liaisons and we've hired more bilingual people over the years. But it's extremely like expensive to have translation services for some of the harder to find languages. Um, you know, and we know that there are over thirty-plus languages spoken in our district at home, so. This is really, I can't, I can't wait till we get it.
Can I just ask really quick, do you know off the top of your head how many languages Atkinson has? Because I think you host most of them.
Yeah, it's um over forty languages.
Forty now, forty.
Thank you. Sorry to interject.
Yeah. And I will just say that um Erin's done a great job having parents participate in the um parent English class. Um, that's held every Monday at Stevens Memorial Library. Um, and Atkinson families are very well represented. So we have about, we have about seventeen different fam, uh, members that are coming on a regular basis. Um, and some are bringing their kids. And we have high school students either through the Honor Society or through the Foreign Language Department who are babysitting during that time for us.
Are those, are those at, in the evenings or?
They're in the evenings, five-thirty to seven o'clock at um Stevens Memorial Library and they're every Monday night.
Perfect.
Um, I think I have one more. I'm sorry. If that's okay with everyone. Um, oh, for uh Mr. Jackson, when we talk about advanced coursework, um, so the adjustments to our course recommendation process, with that coming up in December, what are we, can you give us any indication of like what changes might be made or what we're thinking about or how we're going to, what are you going to do to do that?
No, I mean, I think uh the first piece of it is just getting the information specific to in our coordinator's hands as to what is designated and counts versus what doesn't. Um, what I was amazed to see in the list, you know, I, I don't know what the rhyme or reason is. What I was amazed to see in the list, you know, I don't know what the rhyme or reason is for what they designate as far as high school. There seems to be a lot of specific math courses that are there as opposed to other disciplines. So I think first is to get it to the math, they shared that in our November PD, just so everyone's aware. And then I think as we kind of go look at our data and they start to looking at there, we're always looking to include more people. So, you know, I don't have a specific, they're kind of working on it now, so it's an honest answer to it.
What, I mean, when we think about math, it's a sequential thing, so like, above a certain level starts to count there. What, I know we're doing the calculus project is one thing, are there other things we're doing to make sure that students get, get to that level in math? Because if like, I feel like if certain choices aren't made early enough in an academic career, that that can become a barrier. Like, so like, if I'm not, if I'm not in algebra at a certain point, like, I'm getting as far as I could potentially go is going to be a roadblock, right? So are we, what are we doing to sort of work, remove that barrier perhaps?
Yeah, I think one of the things we've done with the new schedule and kind of going is to get all of our students to Algebra II by their junior year, regardless of when you come in for math at North Endover High School. And I believe pre-calc, regardless of honors, CP, or AP level, counts as advanced coursework. So it allows for then, if you're going to go on past Algebra II, for the student to make that decision and make it based on what they want to do for their future. So I think we've tried to, over the years, allow for more fluidity, especially in the math, because I believe at, you know, the middle school, I think when you hit the eighth grade, that's the only subject that we kind of start to divide from there. And I know there's a lot of, you can see Mr. Gonz all perking up because there's work going on at the middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can say that the number of students in algebra in eighth grade has increased over the last several years. It used to be approximately a 30-70 split, we're now at a 50-50 split. It's making scheduling really challenging, but it's for good reason.
I think something else too, and just to, if you guys recall back to the MCAS presentation, the progress towards advanced coursework at the high school, you know, 67.8 of the students at North Endover High School had completed advanced coursework. And what was really exciting was to see the low-income go up four and a half percent, and to see the Hispanic and Latino go up four percent. And we have some really early indicators of success around the calculus project, Joe. You know, I had a parent tell me a story about a student who was just a couple, just last year, a couple of grade levels behind, and has now been participating in the calculus project. And their latest MAP score testing has them in the 92nd percentile on grade level. So they're performing, you know, at the 97, they're sky-high. And those are things that are life-changing, and those are early stories and anecdotes, you know, that we hear about that make a difference.
Thank you, I'm good for that.
While we're on the subject of math, in the, in the printout here, your goal two is not, is missing, it just isn't in here.
I think there is a typo in there, his goal two was targeted, it said math, somehow something got swapped. I'll fix that. It's correct in that.
It's correct in here, but it says targeted professional practice as goal two.
That is the second one. That's when he was talking about the learning walks and the, so it's not a math goal.
Okay, so the slide was wrong.
The slide was incorrect.
Okay.
Somehow Tiffany's.
I was confused, I was reading the slide and it didn't.
Me too, I wrote that down.
It didn't, okay, sorry.
Sorry, it's the slide.
That's what happens when we're all in the same slide.
Well, that's where I was confused, I was reading the slide and it's not matching what he's talking about. That's where, yeah, okay.
I'll go, I've got a couple of somewhat brief comments. One, I like the consistent format. I think it's very good, hopefully you guys kind of like, you know, being able to share that easily, identify kind of where, where some of those are. Really good detail in those, I think that there's probably more behind all of that, that's, you know, this is really kind of the summary piece that's here. So, you know, that really kind of brings all of that stuff up. I would encourage you, you know, I think two or three of the schools really kind of mentioned family involvement and family engagement, to bring these up, you know, at some of those meetings, and to really make these public and conversation pieces about what you guys and your awesome staff are doing in our schools for that. If there's a way to link and put this on the webpage, I know each of you have specific schools for them, you know, let's put that out there. Like, this is not something that we should be ashamed of, this is, you know, we're trying to move forward with where we are, so let's, you know, we've got a goal, you know, and let's figure out, you know, what we're going to do to kind of move that forward. There are a couple of places where there were some really specific things about trying to, you know, I'm not picking on anybody but Mrs. Goddard, Dr. Goddard, I'm sorry, you know, you mentioned, you know, we would be testing at three different points, right? So like, when we hit point two, like, publish that, like, let's say where our update is, and put it out there. And I'm sure all of the schools kind of have different metrics that you're able to do and kind of put that out there. I just really remember you kind of very specifically kind of talking about those. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about equity in social emotional learning, which I think are really important for our community. And I think, you know, certainly recently, we, we understand that in many, many ways. We're also approaching buzz, I can't speak, budget season as well. And I think the only, like, true reference to that was really about the reading intervention and specialist, and I think that that was really kind of at Sergeant. And, you know, I think it's amazing that you're going into the classrooms and you're helping with that, Karen, it's fantastic. But if we need more of that staff and we need that, I can't promise, but let's make sure that those needs are identified, and we will fight and we will advocate, you know, to try to get those so that you and your staff have the support that's there. So please don't, you know, I know you meet with Dr. Gilligan, you have full permission to arm wrestle.
Oh, we have. You can't believe the conversations that have happened in this room over.
Yeah, I mean, it's great, but you've identified things that you want to do to move. And again, I can't promise you that the money is going to come, but let's figure out what those things are that we need so that we can try to get them for you. So.
Okay, so I'm going to take like a way step back, just so that I don't have an understanding of this, and I'm sure there's other parents out there who maybe are not watching or maybe would have a question about this. The school improvement plans, walk me through how these are developed and how that process works in that, from the get-go.
So I can give you just a brief start, anyway. So each school in North Endover has a school council made up of administrative staff or community member. And the school council meets regularly with the principals, providing feedback and input about the needs of the school. They also serve as a sounding board. So they provide that feedback and input as they're developed. So these documents are, so they keep a school focused, on track, as school staff work throughout the year towards an overall improvement for success for each student, and they identify areas and needs and set goals. So one of the things that we do every year is we come before the school committee to present improvement plans or what we've done really well and what we need to work on. And so we're required to have school improvement plans, and we are going to post them on the district website. So just kind of a primer, it comes, it's all started out of the Education Reform Act of 1993.
Right, right, but what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, okay, so it's developed with the, with the council, and then are they brought then to you, Pam, and then do you provide feedback, what's?
Yeah, can you go to the first slide of the slideshow? Just because this might help a little bit. So as Dr. Gilligan said, you know, all of that, and then so really when we looked at the school improvement plan, so if you look online, you'll see lots of different school districts have some kind of template, or they do something. Some are very specific to a school, some are common. So what we did was, or what I did, with the principals and with Dr. Gilligan and with the central office team, is we really talked about coming up with a common template. And so that is what we did, and that is the template that's right there. And so then what the principals do is they think about what their, the needs of their schools are, and then they review the strategic plan. So we really want our school improvement plans to match the work in the strategic plan. That's why you saw the wheel in lots of their plans. And then we think about superintendent's goals, who takes them from the strategic plan, and then we develop school goals. So what we had our directors do, so Kristen Ando, Kara Larkum, and Ben Cabrera do, is help us dive into the MCAS a little bit, or dive into MAP and dive into DIBELS, and look at some, where some of our needs are. And then the principals and the directors and the coaches all met together, through, also through the work that we did with Lynch Leadership Academy. And, you know, for elementary, it really made sense for them because they worked so closely together to come up with three specific goals. And for all of the grade levels, we thought that three was really attainable, because we want to be able to do this and do it right. And then, once they met with the directors and the coaches, then they came back to the central office team meeting. They presented their plans to Dr. Gilligan, and he asked some questions, we did some tweaking and some reviewing of them. The directors looked at it one more time, and then they meet with their school councils to make sure their school councils are on board with that, and that sort of is how it comes to life.
Thank you, thank you for that understanding, I appreciate it. I know, you know, through each school talked about the equity, and I know this was brought up in the presentation on MCAS of attendance matters. So I'm curious to what individual schools on each individual level does to accomplish that goal in making sure students are in the classroom.
Yeah, I'll speak to that a little bit too. Last year, especially coming out of COVID, and we started a new schedule a few years ago, one of our guidance director came in and really helped us start as a leadership team developing a protocol where we're going to have different communication points based on absences of students. So you hit five days, you know, a counselor is going to reach out. If you hit 10 days, you're going to have a meeting with the assistant principal and the counselor. Now, those were last year, and don't quote me to those exact dates and numbers, but for example, we sent that out at the start of the year to families, and as students hit those absences, we had a more proactive reach-out as to just, hey, what's going on, is there a reason why, can we do anything to help? And then what we saw was, after doing a lot of front-loading work at the early absences is, our number of students that were out over 20 days fell off the deep end. So we were able to kind of put something in place, make some adjustments for this year. Now that like, you know, 1,300 families now know it exists, or maybe not that many, whoever many know that exist, it's not as big as a learning curve as you have a freshman class come in. So we did that, and it really helped, if you saw our attendance points on MCAS, it really was beneficial for us at the high school. So that's kind of what we did the year before, we used the guidance intern to kind of help manage that data, so it wasn't an increased burden on one of our personnel, because it was quite the spreadsheet, if you can imagine, having students know the absences. So it feels like a good spreadsheet.
Yeah, our school, our school counselors would run reports from Power School monthly, and we would sit and we would meet and we would go student by student around, you know, well, this student has this many absences, what's going on with this student? We'd bring the teachers in if we, if we needed more information about what may or may not be going on with the families. Something integral to, me, I can only speak to Franklin, but I'm sure everybody would echo it, the parent liaisons are extremely helpful in reaching out to families, especially families who speak different languages, so that they can assist us in that communication, because sometimes it's a breakdown in communication, and sometimes we're able to just bridge that gap by opening up those lines and building that relationship between home and school, and being able to have the opportunity to express how important it is to have our students in school every day. I mean, we go as far, and I know my colleagues do as well, we look at tardies, because when they're coming in late, they're missing that morning meeting part. And that, for a lot of our students, especially the students who are chronically absent, is arguably one of the most important times of the day. It's the time that they can come in, have that sense of, okay, I'm going to have a great day, I'm going to start off on the right foot. When they come in late and they're already in the middle of something, it, it causes them to have that, okay, I don't know what's going on, and it sets the day off, not ideally. And just bringing the students in, working with our parent liaisons, our school counselors are fantastic about reaching out to families. They have such great relationships with so many of our families across the building. And then we get into the point where Mr. Jackson was talking about, about the protocols of, okay, we're absent this many days, so this is the type of communication that we send home, it's extended to this many days, this is the type of communication. And similarly, as Mr. Jackson said, what I've seen in Franklin is that number of absences per student is just dropping, 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 which is incredible, because like we've said multiple times, once we get them in the seats, we can teach you anything, but we need you here to be able to do it.
Yeah, and I'd say at our age group, it's very similar with, the caveat is we're reminding families that kindergarten is important. I think sometimes families are like, oh, it's just kindergarten, and so you can see an uptick in absences. So there's a lot of information that goes up from, from me at the beginning of the year and the importance of kindergarten, and how attendance right from the start of school can really impact a kiddo's progression in school. The parent liaisons are huge, whether it's a transportation struggle for some families that might be a barrier. They've helped me get busing set up for two different families in the last two weeks, because we saw an increase in numbers of absences. So they are huge in helping us. And then, of course, our counselor in our building is great at tracking the data and meeting with me every, every month to talk about it and talk about plans for individual students if it's needed. And I'd say also the principals, we communicate too, because sometimes you'll see it's families that need that, and so then it's us communicating across buildings of what can we do to help the family.
It's great to see that we're headed in a good direction with that. And I just have one more question. I know specifically, Kedron and Atkinson, you both talked about including the families, family engagement. And I saw, you know, a lot about getting families out to the school, but often, you know, I think of education as a two-way street, right, it's between home and school. So there's one thing to get families into the school, but how are we getting school into the home?
Yeah, so I think one of the things is, getting into the home is like coming, communication from the teachers with what they can be doing at home, but also, like I had mentioned earlier, trying to build up these partnerships with some of our community centers like Woodridge and Royal Crest, so that we can provide more for the students at their homes after school hours is kind of a goal of ours. We're in constant communication with, like, Woodridge, for example, with their coordinators, so I know we've had some like literacy nights there, but it's something that we need to definitely increase, so.
That's true, sometimes you have to go there. And like when we were closed for the storm, like, we set up food to be at Woodridge to be distributed there, you know, just like the academic programming, because a lot of kids just go home, and then, you know, they.
I think Mr. Cushing mentioned it too. What we've found is that lots of families really benefited from some of the virtual meetings, and some families are still hesitant or have difficulty getting out or getting into the schools. So teachers who are offering virtual conferences have been really helpful, and we're finding more people partake in that and are interested in doing it. And some of the work that we're doing in that parent English class is really helping parents. What we've found is that parents don't come into the school because they don't know what to ask, or they don't know how. So like, we practice conferences with them, gave them a script, what we would ask at a conference. And really, they write it out and they practice doing that at the parent English classes, so they can feel more confident going in to the classrooms. When you talked about attendance a little bit, some people don't know when you're supposed to keep your kids homesick. And so what we found is that parents were keeping their kids homesick for things they didn't have to stay home for. So Cheryl Barzak came in with one of her nurses, and really went through that with some of our parents who are either from a different country, or, you know, it just had different rules and different laws, and I'm trying to understand that, but.
Parent liaisons as well, I think they, they're a huge connection to the homes. I mean, we've had situations that they're in homes bringing you anything from a Chromebook, you know. I mean, the counselors are bound, they can do as much as they can do, but they're bound to their buildings where the parent liaisons are out. I mean, they're bringing Chromebooks to mattresses. I mean, so they're out and about doing things for, in their homes, which, and I, I think it's another level of comfortability, because in a really positive way, they're perceived as just a go-between, so that allows that flexibility that as, you know, administrators, teachers, counselors, we just don't necessarily have on a daily basis.
The ability to interact too, like, a lot of us are at a lot of different events, and the ability to see kids outside of that traditional school day and those roles, it goes a long way. I got to say, I was at an event last week, and I was in the class that day. And it was a little strange, because I saw the kids, and they're like, you're the president, right? You're the president. Now, I know we had someone named the president, Chet was named the president last night at the National Honor Society. But I said, you know, I really enjoyed doing math in class today, they taught me about equations. They taught me about equations in fifth grade class. And I'm walking away, and the kid said, hey, we love you. I love you. Like, but it was heartfelt, and I said, you know, I love you guys, too. And so the ability to get out and go places where kids are and see you in that different light is really important. And I'd just say one other thing about the attendance protocol. You know, systemically, putting that in place, not only with just the form letters and the robocalls, but like everyone's mentioned, the counselors, the administrators all here play a key role in connecting. Nurses, like Cheryl Barzak and their team are instrumental in attendance issues and connected with the home. Again, I won't, as Joe said earlier, beat a dead horse. I'm not sure about the parent liaisons, right? Like, they're amazing. But last but not least, one of the most skilled folks we have, it's kind of more of kids who are chronically absent, is we have Officer Tracy. We call her Officer Tracy because she was the school resource officer, I don't know, maybe 30 years, 25 years. She's our attendance officer. So, you know, if need be, she works really closely along with the counselors with DCF or the court system. And she's really a tremendous asset. Like, we're really lucky to have her. She only works one day a week for us, but we probably get two and a half out of her. She's really awesome. So it's not just one thing, but it has to be a team approach where we all own the kids. And if we can do that, that's what makes a difference.
Okay, it's just me, and I think everybody's already asked my questions. I just appreciate all the work that has gone into this. It's so obvious how much time and effort and energy and thought has been put into all these plans. And I love them all for different reasons. And I would just echo what Mr. McDevitt was saying about, you know, budget season is coming up, and we want to be really mindful of how we put together that budget. So I think this can help project what we need. But, you know, a list, staff, curriculum, Eureka, new translation devices, that sound amazing like music to my ears.
Like it's a cost $14 million.
Yeah, right. And why isn't, I'm just going to shamelessly say this, why isn't the Department of Ed using it? Sorry. So just, you know, thank you for all of this work, and let's use it to put together a really well-thought-out budget proposal.
I just want to bring up one thing before we close this subject, because what hasn't been said, and I think it's important to note is that that we're talking about curriculum. In all these trainings, in the trainings, the FCI's, the leaders, special education has a seat at that table. And I think that's a, it's a pretty significant distinction in this district. So when we're training our general educators, our special education teachers are being trained in the same curriculum in the same way as that general education teachers. So when we say things, and this is this statement, we say it a lot, but it's like, it's the fire in my belly of that when we talk about all students deserve our owed access to high-quality instruction. That's a, it's an impactful, huge statement. It's not just something that we say. It's something that we, it's, it actually is a really, really challenging concept for our families and our teachers. And to add to that, someone brought up, one of, I think Joe said in his presentation, that part of the PD around math, they had, so teachers had a bunch of different topics that they could pick around math. And so greater than 50% of the elementary school population chose productive struggle. And when I was meeting with Ben, because we were talking about the same thing in terms of what we were doing for special ed PD, it's the same thing at the middle school. So I appreciate that people are looking at that, so, because the struggle is real and the struggle is hard. So I just wanted to add that as a piece in there, that when we're talking about these things, we are talking about, you know, because, I mean, I see the MCAS scores, too. So the greatest predictor of an increase of those scores in equity is having access to that high-quality instruction and materials. And that needs to happen, and that is not specially-designed instruction. That's classroom work. So I just want to add that piece on there.
Marcy, I think that's a well said. I couldn't have said it better myself. And I really thank the principals for this work, because it is true, we all live it, that we want equal access to an excellent education for every single kid in North End, no matter where you live, who you are. And we're not going to rest. We want to continuously improve. One thing that we, you know, we've had a lot of things to say about like parent liaisons and these. But I think it's important to mention, too, that our teachers, this is a difficult time coming out of COVID. It's been a tumultuous time in the United States to be a teacher. You know, we don't have necessarily people going into this profession. And, you know, sometimes from the outside looking in, it's easy to say, oh, we've implemented wit and wisdom, or we're implementing this. There's some heavy, heavy lifts here, you know. And, you know, one of the things we have to caution and look out for is there's only, there's 180 days. You know, there's six hours of instruction for the most part in a day. And we have to provide the support, the PD, the scaffolding for our teachers, because they are doing it. They're on those front lines. They're talking to parents, and they are the ones who are providing this opportunity for our kids. And so really, kudos to them, because it's not easy work. And what sometimes seems like, oh, we're going to put this in this year, next year we're going to put in math. But the reality is implementation takes time. And we have a lot going on in this district with high-quality instructional materials, review of different subject areas. You know, we're in the process of an equity review. These guys have met all week with having the security review done. They've participated in forums with the special education review, in addition to all the stuff that comes up over time. And I just reel credit to our teachers and to these folks, and we appreciate your support because we are, you know, it takes a village, and the village is here tonight, a lot of them.
Kudos to you, Dr. Gilligan, for recognizing our teachers and all the hard work that they do. Their dedication is the utmost, and thank you for doing that.
All right, well, I want to thank all of you very much for coming. I'm going to give you one commercial, though, the, like, the primo pasta nights of bringing that stuff back. I think especially with the reach out to, you know, to all the different sorts of families, it might be helpful to put a little extra effort to get them to come to those kinds of events, feel welcome. I know that they were great in the day, and I'm glad to hear they're coming back across the board. And I can imagine it was tough, you know, in COVID times to maintain that kind of thing, but we're past that now. So anyway, thanks again, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it.
All right, I'm going to wrap up the superintendent's report. We're only 55 minutes over my allotted time. Okay, it's 9:04.
That's not bad.
Yeah, that's good for you.
Hug your children. Do you know where your children are? It's 9:04. I think Beesie used to say that.
He did.
Anyway, I'm going to turn it over to our executive director of special education, Ms. Marcy Bakusi. And before I do, I just want to say, I had a great time over at the Cookie Monster. I bought a dozen cookies. My son said, get a dozen cookies. You know, it was a little more than I had thought it would be for a dozen cookies, but they were delicious. The sugar cookie, forget it. But Rachel Bedard, I mean, just awesome. I'll let Marcy do the talk, but I really love the swag, as they say. I think the kids say that. But I love the new design. Well, kids, maybe ten...
Don't say that.
Maybe 15 years ago. I love the new design. I think it's awesome, and I really glad to have the sweatshirt tonight.
Yeah, I must have gotten one of the raffles. I didn't hear anything.
Me either.
I didn't win.
No. So there was, Dr. Gilligan said, there was a really nice event on Tuesday night. I had an opportunity to visit both places. I, one time, which I've never been to before, and the Cookie Monster, which I unfortunately have been to many times. But there were a lot of people. It was well-attended. I haven't had a chance to talk, to speak to Sasha, and I don't have total numbers, but I did just hear Ms. Hicks say that they ran out of...
I think they said they...
Sold out.
She was out of the, she no longer had the capacity to make the sweatshirts.
Yeah, so these...
I think that's what I heard, but I could be wrong.
These are great. I mean, I just, I got mine, I got mine early. I got it, because I ordered mine online early, so I got a different batch, so. But this is going to continue into, this is our second year, and they did spend some quality time, I'll call it rebranding. It was really important for the CPAC to kind of foster a more, a very, not want to say more, but an inclusive logo and an inclusive opportunity for lots of families to feel like they can be a part of. So this will continue into tomorrow. They have, they have provided over the last couple of weeks, the stickers that I just gave to you all and some buttons to each of the school buildings, so all teachers can have, whether they be on their computer. So they, it can represent the CPAC, whether special education teacher, regular teacher, parents, teachers. So tomorrow, you can wear your swag. You can wear yellow. But it's a nice opportunity to recognize what a CPAC is, what a CPAC does, and the importance that, the important opportunities they offer to our families, so.
Marcy, guys, do each of the schools give all the kids like a little presentation of why they're wearing this CPAC shirt tomorrow?
Yeah, they did. They have. So I don't know necessarily, like, the individual, what the individuals of schools are doing. Again, this is the second year. But there was, there was discussion, so they, it was in the announcement. It was in the parent announcements, so I can check. We took some great pictures last year, so I'll be going around to buildings to let you know tomorrow.
And last but not least, I didn't have it on, but the North End Parent Resource Network, their event. They didn't have enough people for the event they were going to hold. You know, it's, I know a lot of folks probably wanted to come to the school committee tonight, but they're probably over at the high school. There's, they're holding an event called Drop-In Discussion for Parents Tonight on How to Help Children, Teens, and Tweens Cope With Grief. And this was an important one for us this week to get on, and Michelle O'Leary's running that. And hopefully, we had... Ah, excuse me, the library, Stephen's Memorial Library. And so, good, you know, a terrific group that's a good resource as well. So that's it. All right. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Moving on to the chair's report. Okay, so first, very, very thrilled to tell everybody that my update on the negotiations with NADA, we have reached a tentative agreement as of nine days ago, actually. We could go Tuesday night. So that is just fantastic, and we'll be voting on that, I hope, at the next meeting. So that's that. We have upcoming meetings on November 30th, our board. November 30th, December 13th is the tri-board meeting, and then we'll have our regular meeting on December 14th. There is in your...
Super quick. Tri-board meeting, where is that? Is that, do we have a spot for that yet?
I don't, sometimes it's been at the senior center.
Right, that's why.
I don't, I don't know that it's TBD.
Okay.
Actually, not TBD. They might have a spot. I just don't know. Anyone else know?
Okay. We'll get it to you.
Okay. In your pack, it's a list of the dates that are proposed for January through June. So hopefully, no one, does anyone have any issues with that? All right, so we will, don't forget town meeting Tuesday, May 14th. All right. Just a quick recap on the first community chat that we held.
October 4th.
What was it, October?
November 4th.
November...
Yeah.
Oh, it was November 4th. Yes, that's right. Seems like much longer ago than that. Ms. Pacharsky and I were there. It was pretty well-attended. I want to say 20, 25 people or so. A lot of questions about the negotiations. We handled it as best we could. And we have two more scheduled, one in March and one in June. And I think the dates, I think we already published the dates last time, right? I'm pretty sure. I don't have them handy, but... Yeah, I don't want to take the time to look for them. I mean, they're, yeah, they're set. Then at the request of Ms. Pinkston, we, three of us are now serving on the Daniel R. Andrew Scholarship Committee. There are three different ones. And Ms. Conig, Mr. Hicks, and Mr. Brown are each on one of them. And I think, yeah, I don't think that detail is in here, but we all know, we all have our assignments, so. That's done.
Can I just say something really quickly?
Yes.
I don't know if everyone remembers, but this is three separate scholarships that Mr. Andrew left when he passed, I believe about a year and a half, maybe two years ago now, for about $1.4 million of endowment, you know, not to be touched, only the kind of...
Earnings.
Say, what's the word?
Is it the earnings?
Yeah, the interest that kind of comes from. And I think this is just remarkable. You know, there's, in honor of, you know, his parents, and then two teachers who made a obviously amazing impact on him to bequeath this in his will. And at this point, I think we've gotten about 30% of what is anticipated to come in, and some really amazing scholarships that will benefit not just this first class of 2024, but forever. And I think it's just amazing.
And just to put it in perspective...
Perpetuity. That's what I...
Perpetuity, Jim, yes.
There's the word appropriately used.
One of my favorites.
But to put it in perspective, the amount, the 30% that's been distributed so far generated $10,000 to be distributed among the three...
Right.
For, in one year. So it's going to be a very nice scholarship. All three of them will be good scholarships going forward.
Awesome. So it's an endowment that will continue year after year after year, right? There's one, in each of these three categories, there's going to be one scholarship given each year.
Forever.
Forever.
Correct.
Right. And it was, I just saw it behind me, that which one each of us has. But as I understand it, Mr. Jackson and Ms. Pinkston will reach out specifically to each of us, you know, with the next steps for that. Thank you for that history. I didn't have that, all of that. And then, I think...
Can I just say?
Yes.
I think it would be great at some point, if, you know, to really highlight that, maybe if there's any family left, come into one of our meetings. Just a suggestion.
Oh, family, of that family. Okay. Take it up for that. Okay. Had the pleasure last night of attending the National Honor Society induction ceremony. Brought back a lot of memories for me, both for myself and my kids. So it was a lovely evening, and it was, I was amazed at how many students there were. There were, there were a large number of inductees, you know, over 100, 110, I think, 109.
107 was the number.
107, yeah. Which took a while, but, but that's a, that's a real, that's a kudos to our system for being able to produce that level of scholarship. It's pretty impressive. I mean, with our graduating class, three, between three and 400, I'm sure, but...
Dr. Millie has the...
Juniors and seniors.
Yeah, class sizes.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think we're, senior class is probably about 330, something like that.
We had been averaging about 360, and the numbers are going down. About 330, 340, somewhere in there, yeah.
Yeah.
And so across two classes to have 107 new members is just a pretty impressive number. Because not only they, it's, you have to have a 3.8, what I heard last night, you have to have a 3.8 to be considered, and then you have to apply and, you know, perform service, right? So not only do you have to be eligible, then you have to prove it, right? You have to do some, some real work. So anyway, very impressive. And then the last thing I have is, well, we just talked about it, but just reminding everybody that tomorrow's CPAC awareness day, and wear your buttons and your stickers and your shirts. I got shut out on the shirts. I'll have to find another way to get one, secondary market, maybe? Build up even more revenue.
You can just wear yellow.
Just wear yellow, all right. There you go. If you weren't fortunate enough to get a shirt, wear yellow. Okay, so that concludes the chair's report. And now we have school building committee updates. First, NAMs.
Dr. Miller, we have great pictures. Thank you. We can always find pictures on master plan Monday emails from the town. They often are being highlighted, the middle school. But we have foundation. We have damp proofing of foundation, and we have insulation of foundation, and soon we will, and backfill. We have new drainage systems being put in place. Soon we will have plumbing, underground plumbing going into place. So this is, this is really exciting, so that we can soon have, hopefully, before winter sets in, we can have steel going up and things dried in to do indoor work. And it's amazing, after you do the foundation, how quickly the next thing then happens, how quickly things get constructed. But so far, we are on where we want to be, to have it be deliverable in early August so we can have occupation for beginning of school year.
It's exciting to see it, yeah.
And this is so that, once this is done, we can then have kids... And this is so that, once this is done, we can then have kids use the space and do all the rugs and the HVAC systems and all the other stuff in the older part of the building, including auditorium lighting and curtain, too, right, Dr. Millie? New curtain? Yes.
Correct.
That curtain is 50, 50 years old, right, at least?
Well, we know the rugs are 38.
That's all I have for middle school.
Thank you. And then for Kittredge, that's Mr. McDevitt?
Yeah, I'll go quickly, there's no beautiful slides to show yet, but we met last night. We had a building committee meeting, really to kind of just go over what the process is and the timeline of that. And then the, there will be a kind of a subcommittee of that, what, that will kind of do the selection of the design, if you will. And three people are kind of, are representatives of that. So it's Dr. Millie, Mr. Cushing from Kittredge, who is here tonight, and then Lori Berzloff, who is the designee of the town manager. So the three of them will kind of be our leading force, kind of as we go through some of the design. Not to say that they're, you know, the only ones that are kind of included, but they'll kind of be working to kind of look at the timeline, the design, the plans, all of those type of things as we kind of move forward. And obviously, you know, we're getting MSBA funding for it, but the process is very, very scripted in terms of dates and timelines and expectations with that. So, you know, the OPM that we have, you know, is very well-versed in kind of all of those things to help us to ensure that, you know, no deadlines are missed for that, so.
And for the viewers at home, OPM is owner product project manager, right? And do we, I think another milestone was hit, right? Didn't we sign, finally sign that?
We chose and signed them.
Yes.
The same that we have for the middle school colliers. And as Mr. McDevitt was indicating, I was listening to them yesterday thinking how glad I am that they've been through a lot of these MSBA projects, because there's a lot involved in it. And the, the main things that they talked about is the next selection is the design firm. And it's a panel that consists of 13 people, 10 of which are MSBA, and three are ours. It's very, it's very scripted. And then, once we select, then we'll go through a process similar to what we did when we were doing the facilities master plan and try and decide, you know, what we were going to do and which schools needed renovation, and we were gonna change our delivery to maybe a grade level instead of neighborhood schools and in those surveys we did. So there is, there's a lot of outreach to the community to get feedback, and they have to develop many options for us to select one from. So that's the process, and it's a very long process, but it's well worth, worth it. So it pushes construction out, but we get the funding and we get a good product.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Okay, hold the business. We have a second read and vote on budget directives, which are here.
So I move to approve the fiscal year '24 budget directives as presented in the packet.
I'll second. Okay, discussion?
I have a question. So it was added, provide for anticipated labor cost increases. What does that, what does that...
Well, so, so I, so that one came from me. But we did them independently, right? So I think the third bullet and the first bullet are probably saying the same thing.
Get rid of one of them.
So I was just being more general, I guess, than you were. But I, I'm not married to it. In other words, in other words, each school committee member independently forwarded feedback. So there's, there couldn't be redundancy, and it looks to me like that is redundant.
I would probably remove the first, because I think the third bullet that's there is, you know, salary and benefits, faculty and staff. I feel like that's a little bit more inclusive. I do think that should be number one on our list, but I like the third bullet better than the first.
I agree with that.
I agree. Okay.
So you gotta strike the first bullet.
Yeah.
And move the third.
Move the third bullet to the top.
Move the first.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with that. Friendly amendment. Any other, I mean, I do, we just have to vote if we agree with the way we, and we don't have to take each step, right? We can just vote on, on, on the final version, right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And then the other, so the red, the red items are what was different from last time. So there are additions. Any other discussion? No? All right. So I think we do have to change the motion, though, because it's not exactly what was here, right? We're amending it?
Just as amended.
Is it okay as amended? Whoever moved it, I forgot already.
I didn't, I think, yeah.
Is it okay as amended?
Yeah, I think I made the recommendation. Whatever I said.
You should revoke it and then reamend. It'll, yeah, exactly. I did it three times.
You gotta pull it back.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm totally kidding.
Is everybody happy with it, the way we just described?
Yes.
Excellent. So let's take a formal vote. We're gonna go this way. Ms. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Koenig.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
Mr. Brown. No, I'm kidding, yes. It's past its 5-0. Okay, that's that. New business, MASC Conference, and every time I see that, I think Mass Association of School Committees.
That's the Mass Association of Student Council.
Student Council.
Turn the trips over to Ms. Lathrop if they're there, and if you have any questions.
Sure. You have two trips. This is the first read. Two trips tonight. One is the MASC, they're going to Hyannis. This is where it brings together all of the student council leaders from across the state. That's in March, March 6th through 8th. You'll see that one. And then the second trip is in April, and they are traveling to, the second trip is for high schoolers, 9th, 9th through 12th grade. They're traveling to Vienna, Austria. This is a German immersion program. I'll apologize in advance for this one, that it's somehow, we had a change in our system. We brought many forward to in the fall. This is one that should have been included in that packet, because they have started some of the pre-work for this trip already, and we discovered that. And so we're bringing it forward to you tonight to make sure that you have that. And this is during April vacation, so there's no loss of school time.
Is the, the state conferences overnight? Okay.
Correct.
And there's no delay, because this is a first read, we won't slow them down if we need to wait for a second read for a vote? Or do you need us to suspend the rules?
Vienna trip?
Needs it tonight, or either?
The Vienna trip is pretty much in process, so it would be helpful if you would like to suspend the rules for the Vienna trip, the other.
Sorry, I didn't, I was, I was just not sure.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, so I would move that we suspend the rules to approve the trip to Vienna.
Thank you.
I'm still looking at the first one, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second Pam's motion.
Thank you.
So the 24 students are already signed up?
Is there a discussion today?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just...
I just made my own.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
So the Vienna trip, there was a motion to suspend the rules.
So we have to vote on whether we're gonna suspend the rules before we do any, and then, and then vote on the trip?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. I'm not a big fan of suspending rules, but...
So can I just make a statement?
Yes, please.
So our next meeting is the 30th, which is the due date for the balance. So at that point, families will have put in $2,900 for this trip. So I think that that needs to be considered in terms of whether or not we suspend the rules or not, so that the trip is actually approved. And I'm never in favor of suspending the rules, but I am not in favor of limiting the opportunities that we have for our students. But I'm gonna say, I can certainly recognize and understand that there was a, that this fell through the process in terms of kind of not being approved. This is the second time this year that I feel like this has happened, where we've been asked to do something at the end. The first was a curriculum change at the high school. Students had reviewed it, faculty had reviewed it, students had signed up for classes, and then it was, oh, wait, let's ask the school committee. At this point, we're now asking families to pay $2,900, and, oh, wait, by the way, we should probably ask for permission. So the pattern of this is actually disappointing. I'll vote no in terms of suspending the rules, but if that passes, I will be voting yes, because I do not wish to deny the students an opportunity. I'm a huge advocate of overseas travel, or any type of travel to expand the educational experience.
I'm similarly a big fan of experiential learning. I have a question. People that struggle with affordability, it's the same as all the other ones, they, there are scholarships available, they have to apply for them, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay. And similarly, every trip is treated that way? Okay, I don't have any more questions. Let's vote on the, anyone else have any more discussion? Or can we vote on the suspension of the rules?
I don't like suspending the rules. It bothers me.
All right, any further discussion? And let's vote on rule suspension to then consider the trip. Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Nope.
Mr. Hicks?
No.
Great. It's up to me. Let me, I can't ask any more questions. I'm gonna vote no. So that motion is defeated. Okay, so we still had a first read on that, we had a first read on the other one. There's no other action to take, correct?
Nope.
Okay. Budget status update.
I'm gonna focus tonight on the...
Oh, no, never mind.
I'm gonna focus tonight on the cover sheet. Because the budget status report that's in the packet doesn't really tell you much. It doesn't have the teacher salary increases in there yet, because the MOA hasn't been approved. So what that reflects is spending to date, but we've added 3% to teacher salary increases. So we won't have an accurate number until the MOA is executed and we do the retros and, and put in the additional pay. When we do that, what will happen is, somebody mentioned earlier about COVID, and we had a lot of funding during COVID through ESAR grants, and it, it covered a lot of things that were going on in the economy. But that went away after last year. We used it all up for the end of last year. And we're feeling the impact this budget year. We've already, Dr. Gilligan and I have talked to the town manager, they're feeling it as well. But we're gonna have to put our heads together and figure out how to get through this year, because we will be over budget. And it could be substantially, but we'll have to work on it and get the projection once we put the teacher salaries in. But here are the pressure points. I think you remember us mentioning the OSD agreed to a 14% increase for out-of-district tuition, out-of-district placement tuitions. That's a large number. Circuit breaker is down for us this year. We thought maybe the state would do something with regards to circuit breaker to offset that, but that didn't happen. They were at, maxed out already at 75% reimbursement, and it stayed there. Increased summer school services, again, still coming out of COVID, and the need for those services is still there. Reduction in circuit breaker reimbursement, I mentioned. The need for additional TAs. What we've been using are long-term subs when we need those, because we're not, just not finding them when we advertise. And using an agency in a couple of cases for those. We've used all, we had anticipated having about $200,000 of ESAR funds left, but we had to use that last year based on additional expenses that we had incurred. Another one that we've seen happen, it's been happening each year. When I first started here, what we call turnover savings. Older teachers retiring, being, you know, at the top step, being replaced by newer teachers. You'd have a savings in next year's budget. But you'd also have a situation where teachers get additional credits to qualify for the next column on the salary schedule. It used to be that turnover savings would cover those column increases, and then some, to the tune of about $65,000. This year, we're in the hole by $250,000 in column changes, and you guys have heard the discussions during negotiations about the credits that are available and, and the ease with which columns can be gained. And that's the impact that that's having. And then we continue to have maintenance issues that come up, whether it's boilers, you know, just this week, Atkinson boiler went down, the middle school, we're, you know, patching them together as best we can, we're working with Steve Foster. But we're spending a lot of money on, on HVAC issues especially. And then the increased salary percentage increases, as you know, we budgeted for 2.5% for all our groups, but we negotiated contracts that were above that 2.5%, so we need to make that up as well. So there's a lot of pressure on the budget this year, and I'll have a clearer picture with numbers associated with these for the next budget report.
When will the next budget report be?
I would anticipate if we approve, so the next meeting you said is November 30th, and then the one after that is December 14th.
Correct.
So December 14th, because that'll be a point after that meeting where we'll be able to execute the MOA and put those salaries in.
Thank you. And when I look at the, at the attachment here, so it's the, the first column, or working left to right, the first column is the actual amount that was budgeted, right?
It's what's in the budget right now, yes.
All right.
For each line item.
And then the next column is what's been expend, extend, sorry, expended so far?
To date, yes.
To date, okay. So the percent is how much of the budget's been spent?
Right, and that'll vary.
Sorry, is it how much remains or how much has been spent?
How much has been spent.
Been spent.
Correct. And so for instance, custodian, central office administration, their salaries are going to reflect, you know, a higher percentage, maybe 40% at this point versus a teacher who, they start later in the year. So the percentage spent there is lower. Summer school is, you know, already spent out because it's all done. Things like that, so they vary. And utilities, electricity is pretty consistent, but our, our budget for gas, heating season hasn't started yet, so that's gonna...
Right, so that's gonna be low.
Be a low percentage, exactly.
Yeah.
I'd be scared if you spent that already.
One of the things that's always kind of, you know, alarming, too, when you look at them, and some of the things are, you know, already well over 50%, you know, is we need materials and supplies to kind of start the year, right? And so those, you know, not that they're not gonna be, you know, things like paper are not replenished throughout, but, you know, materials, things of that nature are already kind of purchased, you know.
That's a good example. There's a big purchase at the beginning, and then, yeah, paper and things like that are added, you know, replenished during the year, but the bulk is done in the beginning. Yep.
I remember freaking out my first, like, couple of years. Jim, we need to talk. How can we possibly?
And Jim, these are the very similar, these are the pressure points we talked about last year during budget season itself. We knew were coming and really made a conscious...
really made a conscious effort to have the staffing and the things that we need for this year, as we continue to come out of COVID.
Right, it's interesting, because, you know, we implemented the plan and, and the budget covers the positions, but, you know, these are, these are kind of unanticipated consequences that happen and we've had kind of a buffer with the ESSER funds in the last couple of years and it's just not there anymore.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Dr. CFO? All right. Public comment?
No. One, one quick, I guess, public con question, or statement, I guess, we will, just because we didn't suspend the rules today and vote and approve that trip, we will vote on that at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And I will mention, just because my son is coming home to attend this event, there is a robotics competition at the high school on Saturday. So if anybody is any interested in going out, that's always an exciting, interesting event.
Are you judging?
I don't know what he's doing, but it's bringing him home, so I don't really care.
Is he, is he a college student, coming back to?
He's a coast guard.
Oh, coast guard, oh, okay, he's coming back, oh, must be something exciting. All right, anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig.
Yes.
And Ms. Petrowski.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are adjourned.
You can gavel.
I get the yavel.